Good evening and welcome to the Waterloo City Council Work Session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Vois.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Mrs. Juin.
Here. A motion, please, for the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our first item on the work session is an update on the GIS project. And I'm assuming we're turning it over to our tech genius, Chris Younglett.
Uh, Chris Younglett, Director of Technology. So about three years ago, we did a, um, we had a kind of a citywide assessment done on geographic information system needs for the city. Uh, we partnered with Pro West GIS out of Minnesota, Walker, Minnesota, to come down and help us with that assessment, put together a strategic plan. At that time, uh, we also had a work session to talk to the council to kind of go over what we found, uh, what our direction would be. So, we thought, um, we've made a lot of progress in three years, so we thought it would be a good opportunity to do an update to that strategic plan, um, kind of reassess where we're at, where we've come from. So, we've had, um, uh, Pro West come back down, do that assessment again, meet with departments. So, um, I'd like to introduce, uh, Candace Sharon Brock from Pro West GIS. She'll go ahead and, and lead the presentation. And, uh, if you have any questions, uh, let us know.
Thank you.
All right, well, uh, good afternoon, uh, council. Thank you so much for taking time out today, uh, to learn a little bit more about GIS and how things are progressing here, here at the city. Uh, again, my name is Candace. I'm the President and CEO of Pro West. I've been there for eighteen years and, uh, was also the person who, uh, worked on the original strategic plan with the city, uh, three years ago and have been working with them, uh, as they execute on that plan over the past three years. So, it's, uh, it's really wonderful to be able to be back here and, uh, see how everything has progressed. Uh, just very quickly, a little bit about Pro West. We are a GIS consulting firm, so geographical information system consulting firm, and that's what we do. And the majority of our business is local government. So, we're working with cities and counties like yourselves every single day, helping them make very good decisions as, as it relates to GIS. So, happy, happy to be here. We're just gonna take a few steps before we get into the nuts and bolts as far as the progress the city has made and just make sure that we're, uh, on the same page with, with GIS and, uh, the steps that we've all taken to get to where we are today. Uh, for those of you who might not be as familiar with GIS, again, it stands for Geographical Information Systems. How I like to describe it is that GIS helps us answer where questions. So, if you think about, uh, everything that happens here at the city, we're all asking where questions all the time. Where are the fire hydrants? Uh, when is my garbage going, where is my garbage going to be picked up and when is it going to be picked up? Um, where are the utilities at? Uh, we're answering where questions all day long. And GIS helps all the different departments and all the staff answer those where questions. And as you'll see, as we go through the presentation here, there's a lot that GIS is addressing here, here at the city, so it's exciting to see. So, how this process started out, like Chris said, was in two thousand seventeen, there was a strategic plan, uh, that was implemented. Uh, that strategic plan focused on coming onsite for a week and meeting with many of the departments to learn more about their business workflows and some of the challenges that they were experiencing, uh, and looking at ways at how GIS technology can address, uh, some of those different business workflows, right? So, we were here for a week, we met with the group, and we proceeded to look for, um, all different kinds of ways that GIS can support the city and the different departments. That strategic plan was broken out into several different phases over the course of several, several years. And so, what we're doing here onsite is revisiting where has the city, uh, went, right, since a few years ago. So, also, in addition to the onsite interviews, what we worked on were recommendations for how each department could utilize GIS, as well as recommendations for hardware and software licensing, uh, that's needed to implement GIS. We also looked at different ways that GIS can be integrated in with different systems here at the city. We also looked at recommendations for training and ongoing, ongoing education, uh, for staff, right, throughout the city, uh, to ensure that they are kept up to speed on all the new technology and how it can progress. So, the strategic plan covered many different aspects, right, of GIS and how it's implemented at a city. So, in two thousand seventeen and into two thousand eighteen, some, uh, was working on the plan, uh, with Chris and Ben and many of the others here at the city. And in two thousand eighteen, uh, there was the implementation of the ESRI Enterprise Licensing Agreement for Software, as well as implementing hardware infrastructure to support GIS. ESRI, in case you aren't familiar with that term, ESRI is the Microsoft of GIS. So, they are the leaders in GIS technology, and that is what the city utilizes here. And the city now has an enterprise license agreement to get access to much of the software that the city needs to move GIS forward here. So, in two thousand eighteen, much effort was put into place, uh, by Chris and Ben and staff to get that licensing in place and to get the hardware, uh, behind the scenes all put in place to support many of the different types of applications. And then in two thousand nineteen, um, and maybe a little bit in two thousand eighteen, a lot of work was done on configuring many different types of solutions, which we'll go through some of that. So, that's a really high-level overview of the last three years. So, for hardware and software, as far as hardware implementation goes, part of the strategic plan was outlining what hardware needed to be put in place to support GIS, uh, and to be able to scale GIS at a city the size, um, and of the growth that Waterloo has. So, many servers were put in place, security was put into place to make sure that private data stays private, someone and so forth. In addition, like I said, for software licensing, the ESRI Enterprise Agreement was put into place. Um, and because of that ESRI Enterprise Licensing Agreement, the city was able to go from just a handful of staff that had access to GIS software to literally dozens, right, dozens of staff having access to desktop GIS and even more staff having access to web and mobile-based solutions to perform business functions. So, in a year's timeframe, the technology, access to the technology exponentially increased. And that's a really great thing to see. Other progress that has been made, um, in the past year or so, uh, that the hardware and the software has been put in place, has been in the category of data. And when I talk about data, I mean spatial data. So, some of the high points is that using the GIS technology and the licensing has enabled city staff to increase the accuracy and the completeness of the city road data, as well as the city address data. When it comes to cities, you know, parcels, utilities, roads and addresses are key foundational data layers that all departments utilize on a regular basis. So, with the implementation of the plan and the hardware and the software, that road and address data was able to be upgraded, um, enhanced, the completeness and the accuracy of it. In addition, uh, specific types of utility data has been migrated into a more modernized format, so it can be easily accessible, um, and shared with others throughout the city if that is desired. In addition, the streetlight data is now all in GIS and it can be visualized on a map. Before the plan and before this was implemented, this information existed in paper format. With the implementation of the licensing and the hardware and the progress, that streetlight data is now completely inventoried and in a format that can be seen and analyzed spatially on a map. That is a huge step forward, and that is because of the software and the hardware and the planning that was put into place. So, that is, uh, a, a major step forward. In addition to data, there's also been steps forward as far as business system integration. GIS is a integrating technology, which means that it can integrate with different types of systems. So, Waterworks, uh, has other types of databases that have been integrated in with GIS, making it easier to access critical water utility data on a map, uh, versus being in a siloed environment. Um, in addition, there's all sorts of business system, uh, integration going on here at the city. Uh, the televising system has been able to be better integrated in with GIS than it was before, right? So, as the city moves forward with GIS, integration is going to be, uh, you'll see that more and more reported, right? Because the city is always innovating, the city, different city departments are always looking at, um, ways to utilize technology to improve those business workflows. GIS is a part of integrating in with those other systems such as televising or dispatch, um, or Waterworks, uh, maintenance or inspections types of, uh, databases can all be integrated in with GIS, and some of that has already started to, to happen. There's also been, uh, strives forward in the category of automation as it relates to GIS, meaning what types of business workflows can be more automated, right, with GIS? And again, when we look at, uh, Waterworks, there's automation behind the scenes happening right now to connect some of their, uh, external databases in with GIS to make the data more accessible and to make it more easily, uh, analyzed. In addition to that, there's been enhancements and some streamlines as far as how the, uh, city consumes some of the parcel information from the county as well. Um, so some of those processes that maybe were taking many, 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 many steps have been consolidated into, uh, nightly routines that automatically happen so that people can, staff can focus on other types of tasks. So, there's been movement forward in automation as well. And finally, and my personal favorite are the solutions, and we'll talk a little bit more about those, but solutions are the interfaces, right? The actual maps, the visual output of GIS. It's the exciting part of GIS, right, the output of it that everybody wants to see, right? And so, the city in the past year, a little over a year, has implemented, uh, roughly ten or so different types of solutions or interfaces that, uh, focus on different types of business workflows, right, throughout the city. So, that's, that's a lot. That's a lot. I work with cities and counties, uh, all day, every day in my job, and, uh, considering, considering, uh, all of the different things that are going on at the city, um, to be able to accomplish, uh, all of these things in, in a very short amount of time, um, is a really, uh, a tribute to the staff here and the work that they, that they do. So, um, pleased to, pleased to report that for sure. So, when it comes to the solutions, right, the, uh, the things that we can all see and tangibly look at as an output from our investment in GIS, right, here's a list of just some of these, right, that have been, have been worked on. Different ways of using the technology to establish field, uh, collection inventories, like the streetlights that I was talking about, mapping out, uh, and communicating to the public the garbage routes and when their garbage pickup is going to occur. Um, there's been a new public-facing tax parcel viewer that has been, um, configured and pushed out to the public. There's several different types of utility-based viewers that Waterworks and others are using to access that utility data in a quick and efficient manner versus having to look through paper copies, right, of data or trying to figure out whether or not the information they're looking at is current. Hydrants, there's, uh, hydrant status solutions, uh, hydrant inspections are being worked on right now. Uh, code enforcement is, is, uh, in the process of rolling out, uh, some new solutions, uh, to help out with code enforcement throughout the city. Again, modernizing and updating some of those existing business workflows to take multiple steps down to fewer steps and to ensure that everybody's operating off of a common operating platform when it comes to the data that they're looking at. There's work being done right now, uh, with the culture and the arts and the library as well, um, which is really neat to see how GIS, um, is going to be helping support, uh, some of those initiatives moving forward as well. So, when I added up all the different departments who have new types of solutions, there was about twelve to fifteen or so departments that had, that have touched some sort of new GIS output over in the course of the last year or so. And again, that's very, very progressive and a really neat thing to see, so that, those are all good, those are all good things. And I can show you. So, just to kind of give you an example. This right here, right, is an internal landing page, right? So, internal staff. Oh. Oh, it's actually not there. Well, I can get that one. That's okay. That's okay. We can look at the screenshots, too. I've got a backup. So, if you look at the bottom screenshot on there, that's a screenshot of the internal and internal GIS, what we call map galleries. This is a page, right, that has been started so that, uh, oh no, that's public one. Public one. Bottom one's a public one. So, that's a, uh, public-facing map gallery page that the public can go and access to look up information and get access to different kinds of maps. The screenshot on the top is, uh, look at an internal map gallery page where staff can start to go look at internal facing solutions and have access to those. So, this is coming together really nicely. It's a really great start to being able to consolidate all the different types of solutions that are being built. Um, and these can all be configured in different ways and secured in different ways. Uh, but it's really great to see how both the public map gallery GIS sites and how the internal GIS sites are really starting to, to evolve and take shape. So, a year from now, you're gonna see even more, right, on there, and a year later, even more. So, it's, it's, it's great to see that evolve in that way. Also, as part of the GIS technology that the city has, they're able to look at statistics as far as how these different solutions are being accessed. So, how many hits are these sites getting? And you can start to see trends, right? Um, and this is especially important for public-facing solutions as the city moves forward with these, is that you will be able to determine, uh, how different sites are being accessed and how, uh, the frequency of their use, right, moving forward. So, uh, all of these different graphs and statistics are, are generated, um, by the GIS system, by the software, and, uh, as you move forward, uh, you'll be able to generate more of these, but this will be a great way to, to show how these sites are being accessed, uh, both by the public and by internal staff. So, then, we also, uh, want to make sure and mention that, so, all of this work, the hardware and the software and the solutions, uh, that have all been developed and the data that has been, uh, updated, right, all of this hard work has been nationally recognized by ESRI. And again, ESRI is the Microsoft of GIS. And so, last year, um, ESRI, well, every year, ESRI hosts a, uh, worldwide user conference, and, uh, the city of Waterloo, uh, along with Ben and Chris, were, um, acknowledged, uh, at a ceremony, uh, out at ESRI, uh, in California, uh, for all of the work, uh, that has been done, um, the past few years at the city of Waterloo. And just to kind of give you a perspective, there are literally thousands of entries, um, for the Special Achievement in GIS Award every year, and there's anywhere from about ten to twelve different local governments that receive this award every year, and Waterloo, uh, last year was one of those. And so, uh, that is really, really exciting for you guys, and what a wonderful accomplishment, and again, a testament to, you know, Ben and Chris obviously have worked very, very hard, um, to get all of this off the ground, and so, it was really wonderful to see that hard work, uh, be recognized on the national level. So, uh, something to be definitely very proud of. Um, in addition, in addition to that nationwide recognition, uh, the city is also getting recognition, uh, regionally and, and other national ways. Um, last year, they presented, um, at the Iowa Technology and Geospatial Conference, um, receiving lots of feedback from other local jurisdictions that are wanting to know, "How do we go on that same journey?" So, that's neat to see that happening, right? Um, they've also, there's also been, uh, outreach from different, uh, other publications, nationwide publications such as the municipal. Um, so, the city is certainly in the GIS realm, um, the city has certainly gained, uh, recognition, uh, for the work and the planning, uh, that has been going on here. So, moving forward, right, the future definitely is bright, uh, for the city as we move forward with GIS technology. So, moving forward with the technology, right, we want to look at hardware and really, uh, expanding the use of some of the software that the city has access to. City has access to a lot of different kinds of software, and you're just getting started. So, it's gonna be really, uh, neat to see how the technology continues to, to grow here. Uh, but making sure that that hardware and that software stays upgraded is, is a key, uh, key point of all of that. So, I'll make sure and keep on the guise on that, but, um, it's, uh, it's, it's important to keep all that upgraded. As I mentioned earlier, uh, as the city explores new business systems and different departments, we want to keep an eye on GIS and how GIS can be integrated in with those business systems. It will only help consolidate, uh, the work that you're doing here. Uh, looking at enhancements in data development and obviously more and more solutions, right, those end, uh, products. Uh, just meeting with the departments here today, uh, doing a brief health checkup on the strategic plan, and we'll be, uh, providing an update, uh, to, to the city as far as some of the findings. Uh, it's, it's been really great. Overall, the feedback from the departments has been, uh, today that the solutions that they received, uh, are, are working, have impacted their workflows, and looking at doing more with those. So, high-impact types of solutions are looking at ways to manage sidewalk inventories, looking at more ways to perform field inventories and to be able to take the data with them out into the field so they have access to real-time or near-real-time data, right? It's really common themes that, that have come up. Um, looking at, and this is a natural next step for where you're at in your journey, is using GIS to address different types of maintenance and inspections and work order types of tasks. Another common theme that came up, uh, throughout today, throughout all the different departments, this is a natural progression. So, more and more solutions will be, uh, developed and configured in that space. What time I have? Oh, that's it. All right. So, again, I thank you so much for having us. Um, I can tell you, it's definitely been a pleasure working with the city. It's a pleasure to come back, uh, even though we've been working with you, uh, off and on over the past three years on various things. It has definitely been really great to come back and meet with some of the same people that I met with three years ago and to see, uh, the new solutions being implemented and the excitement and energy around how to take the next steps with the technology, right, to continue to streamline those workflows. So, it's, it's, uh, been a great journey, and congratulations to the city and to Ben and Chris, um, for the work that has been done here, and we look forward to, to, to many future, uh, positive updates on how the technology is supporting the work that you're doing here. So, thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, terrific. Do we have a plotter? Can we put any of this on paper?
Let Ben get into the nuts and bolts of it, yeah.
Ben Wagner, Engineering Department. Uh, yeah, we have a plotter we can plot up to forty-two inches wide.
Okay. And most of this information then can, can be in hard form, so you can see it.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, we can put in, we can put it all in, uh, hard form.
Good, good. Thank you all very much and congratulations, especially Chris and Ben. Good job for implementing plans, one thing, but to get it implemented is exciting, so...
Yeah, and here's the award.
Yay! Beautiful!
I'm sorry, I missed all that. Can you do the presentation again? Well, uh, excellent work, uh, the three of you. Thank you so much for your efforts.
Thank you.
All right.
Good job.
I think now we have, um...
Brian Bowman.
We have, uh...
Brian and Randy.
We have Brian and Randy and Strand here today as well. Appreciate it. Thank him. Glad he saw fit to let me see another day. Seriously.
No, go ahead.
All right, now we have none other than Brian Bowman and, uh, gentlemen to tell us about the update on the Waste Management Biosolids Project.
All right, thanks for having me, council. I, first off, I'd like to do a couple introductions. I've got our engineers from Strand. We have Randy Wertz over here with his hand up, great engineer, and his compadre, Sam Josvar. They've done excellent work for us. Really happy with their, uh, design and, uh, the input I got from the contractors that bid on this project said it was outstandingly designed, so that, that's, that's good news. It really is. So, anyway, I'm here to talk about the Biosolids Project FY 2020. Again, Strand Engineering Associates were the engineers on this. So, little, a little background on this, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of looking up on this, I should be looking here. Uh, on the history and background of why we were doing this project and the project overview and the cost and funding and what our next steps are. So, beginning in, uh, the spring of two thousand seventeen, uh, we had Strand do our nutrient reduction strategy, and at that time, they also did our facility plans. A facility plans is an all-encompassing document that kind of lays out the blueprint of where we are and where... that kind of lays out the blueprint of where we are and where we're going. Lays out the roadmap of treatment. The facility plan and the nutrient plan were completed in early 2017. In that identification document, they came up to what was like a near-term phases, midterm and long-term, and each cost associated with that. Now, the BioSalads Project falls into the near-term things that we have to do at the, at the wastewater treatment facility. So that costs 56.3 million. This BioSalads falls into that category, okay? There it goes. It even says it right there. It's included in this total, so I'm a little ahead of myself. So we considered some options for about a year, and then we basically started the design of the BioSalads Project in 2018. The design was complete late 2019. As you're aware, we went and we opened up bids on January 23 of 2020. And then this is basically what BioSalads does. Now, when you look at the yellow part of the plant, BioSalads is, all goes through the yellow part of the train. That's the important thing. I could, we got two plants out at the wastewater treatment facility. One's called Satellite and one's called Easton. And basically, they are a shared BioSalads project, process. So anything down to the bottom, bottom of the screen and over to your right, that's the BioSalads handling portion. So the improvements of the BioSalads processes are needed for, obviously, we have to replace aging infrastructure and equipment. We've got to improve hydraulic constraints and bottlenecks of the BioSalads process and the internal recycle loads that affect the process stability of our, and performance of, of the BioSalads stream. This project will add increased flexibility on how we manipulate flows, improve safety, and reduce operating costs. So here are the highlights of, and each one is numbered on the BioSalads part. They're identified numerically, like one is a WASZ tank, two is thickening improvements, number three would be digester building improvements, four, a new chemical feed building, five would be digester boiler improvements, six would be a new sentrate tank, and number seven would be de-watering improvements. So let's talk about them individually. WASZ storage, expansion, and configuration. Why? Why do we need this? And why is it included in this project? And how? How are we going to address this concern? So every day in our process, we take what we call waste-activated sludge out of the waste stream. And we're talking about a significant volume. We're talking about, usually about 400,000 gallons that we waste away every day. Currently, we have a WASZ tank that is severely undersized. So what that means is, instead of being like a continuous flow into, we come in in the morning and we say, we've got to waste 400. That means we really got to bridge that gap during that working day. And what that does is it puts a strain on our biology because we'll come in and we're going to say, we're taking 400,000 gallons out of you in seven hours instead of spread over 24 hours. And it, it messes with our stability. So what are we going to do? What we wanted to do is we wanted to utilize existing infrastructure out of the wastewater treatment facility. We had a tank that was nearby the process that we were able to utilize and retrofit this tank and put it as part of this process. So by using this existing tank, we're going to add nearly 1 million gallons of storage, which will give us like three days of storage of this waste-activated sludge. And in addition to that, we're going to be replacing some existing pumps and blowers because we aerate this WASZ tank to keep it in suspension, okay? And additionally, we'll be addressing some of the primary pumping concerns that we have as well. So thickening system improvements. What we want to do is thickening is removing the water from the sludge before we put it into the digesters. So what we're going to do is we're going to be adding some new pumps on the back end of those. We're going to be replacing all the polymer additive systems. Currently, right now, we do like a dry polymer. We got to add this dry polymer into there. It's kind of, it creates a dust. So we're switching over to a wet polymer-based system, which should give us, not only address some of the safety concerns that we have with that, but it should be able to give us drier solids as well. Okay? Now we're into digester feed building improvement. So the thickened WASZ is stored before it's fed to the digesters. And what we're going to do is, a lot of the equipment that we have is at the end of its useful life. So what we're going to do is be replacing some of those pumps and some of the new mixers in the tank. This is post-thickening. So right now, we have four, what we call thickened-activated sludge pumps. We're going to downsize them to three, but we're going to modify some of the pumping so that we can use those three pumps to feed across the digesters. It should give us a lot, a lot more like flexibility. And I mentioned that, okay? Excuse me. Also, part of this bid is a new chemical feed building. The chemical feed building addresses some of the toxic components that are created in digested sludge. Hydrogen sulfide is a common gas that is created in anaerobic digestion. By adding a ferric chloride solution into the feed of the digesters, it'll suppress some of that. And in addition to that, this addition of ferric chloride predigestion will save down the road because annually we have to add a chemical to our process to clean the pipes. We get this chemical feed or chemical buildup in the pipes called struvite, very difficult to remove. By adding this ferric chloride predigestion, it should keep that at bay. In addition, right now, we do add some of the ferric chloride, but we're manually moving it around and manipulating it with totes. It's a safety concern. So by having this, this building there and injecting it right there, it eliminates some of those safety concerns. Also, part of that, in the digesters themselves, we have three boilers. Boilers are needed to heat up the digesters. So in this, in this project, we've included two boiler replacements because we replaced one in 2018. Boilers have to use methane gas, really a harsh gas to burn. And so by, by replacing two of them in this project, it'll eliminate, since we already placed one in 2018, having it part of the bid is being proactive because they're destined to fail pretty soon. They're older equipment. They were placed in 1999, so they've already got 20 years on them. Also, part of the project is a sentrate tank. Now, a sentrate tank is, at the end of the process, when we process sludge before it's land-applied, we squeeze that sludge down and all the liquid that comes off of it's called sentrate. This sentrate is very high in ammonia. So again, we're dealing with a batch process where during working hours, we come in and we work like crazy, press that sludge, and then our system is shock-loaded with this high ammonia. What the sentrate tank does is it's going to build a tank so that you can release this high sentrate over a longer period of time, over like 24 hours. Then we got to talk about de-watering improvements. Inside the filter building, where we process that sludge, we have what we call filter presses. We're moving to a new, an improved way to de-water sludge. The filter presses that we have are going on 25 years old. We're at a, we're at a place now where the equipment is starting to nickel and dime us so much where we're constantly putting money into these. This new technology will achieve a much drier solids and give us a drier cake, which will reduce our cost for the, for the hauling out every day. It also addresses some conveyance of the, of the, of the sludge that's de-watered, that gets loaded onto trucks. That's part of the project. Here's, here's just an example. Currently, we're, we're putting out about 16.5% solids. The new technology will get us around 25%. This is on paper what we think will save annually with the new technology. About a 34% reduction in, in hauling cost. So anyway, bids were opened. The low bidder was Woodruff Construction out of Waterloo. We're very encouraged about that. Having a local company be able to provide the contract for this is very encouraging. We also had bid alternatives listed on this. And these were built-in things that we put into the bid documents to possibly take off if, if, if costs were too high. And those alternatives were the outdoor solids loadout area at 199, chemical storage, or chemical feed building at 840. Alternate number three was the primary sludge improvements. And alternate four were the boiler replacements. And again, I think, I think the bids were really good value, though, from what Woodruff gave us. This is RF-funded at a rate of 2% at 20-year loan. So next steps, we're hoping to award this project February 17, and construction beginning in March. Two-year construction period expected to be complete in 2022. The next slides are for, or I guess this slide just basically highlights some of the, some of the overall summary. Again, to replace aging assets near the end of their useful life. We're really getting to the end of the, end of their useful life on that. We were glad that we were able to work with existing infrastructure. That's really important because to, if we would have had to include some of these, like for instance, the WASZ tank, just having that already in the ground and able to retrofit it is significant cost savings. Implement solutions to, to meet current treatment needs while allowing for, you know, flexibility and adaption for, so that we can grow to the future, all right? And again, our primary, primary objective is to protect the health and safety of the community in an efficient, effective, cost-effective manner. The next slide deals with some of the cash flow projections, and I'll let Randy speak on that if you want.
Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. So these next two slides here that we're going to be talking about is how fast the project is actually going to be escalating. So as you can see on the screen there, it's showing to the 25, 15, and the 75% there, whether it's either accelerated or not, whether they stay on, on progress or not. This next slide is really kind of where we want to talk about how we're actually going to end up funding this. So part of the fee structure that we've had in the past, as far as all the projects we've had to do, we've typically been looking at a 5% year increase because of the acceleration of this project in the middle. We kind of had budgeted around 7 million a year, but because of the fact that this project is going to accelerate a little bit quicker than that, we tend to believe, think that come to the second year, that we may actually have to increase that up to 10%. As of right now, we're just thinking five for the first year, but then depending on how it progresses, we may need to look at that. I've been working with Michelle on that, and we can kind of, she can assist with elaborating a little bit more if need be. But just kind of want to give you guys a heads up that just because of that, we may need to look at a larger increase next year. And then, of course, in the following year, if we'd be back down to 0.5%, or reevaluated at that time, depending on how it ends up. So with that being said, I guess we'll kind of open it to questions, whether to Brian, myself, or Strand as well, and/or Michelle, so.
Mr. Jewett.
Just a question, two questions. Did the cost come in above or below your estimate?
They came in right, right at.
Right at, okay.
We'll close that estimate. In fact, Woodruff was, were they at 16? Yep.
Okay. And then is this all, pardon my ignorance here, is this all part of the consent decree?
It is not.
This is over and above what we have to do for the consent decree?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
This is wastewater improvements only, not, not question system.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Foyce.
Well, what happened if we didn't do these things? I mean.
Well, just like Brian said, you know, we have aging infrastructure. So, you know, right now, since it was just a couple months ago where we had to actually replace one of the melt filter presses. So I mean, as we do this, you know, that's, that's the downside. You know, we're just throwing money down the drain on older infrastructure. And as of right now, you know, everything is staying compliant, but you know, as you, you can't control your breakdowns. Everything we do has redundancy in them. But when everything is at the same age, you know, that, that's part of the problem.
And maybe if I could elaborate, I know it's kind of hard, but oops, can I? Can I go backwards on that? Okay, so recently, you know, we're talking about, we were talking about the WASZ tank. If you could just keep, go back all the way to that, to the overview. One of the first slides. There you go. All right, even farther back, one more. There we go. That's the one I want right there. So recently, like I'm talking a couple weeks ago, we had a problem with, I don't want to call it upset, but there was a, a small little blip on our digester process where we're having some foaming in our digesters. That really basically caused us to get creative on a way for us to manipulate the solids flow stream so that I can handle it later on. Now, having this BioSalads plan in place, basically with the, with the bigger WASZ tank that I was talking about, you got three days of storage. And there's no need to get creative on that. You have that storage built in and that flexibility will already be built in. Randy touched on, on, on some of the, the aging equipment, what happens. Well, right now, in addition to, you know, continuously throwing money into this old equipment, there, there'd probably be overtime to with, and workload because we're, we're running out of equipment, is basically. We've, we've put it out to the last minute on some of this stuff. So the increased flexibility, the assurances that you have place and flexibility to manipulate your flows, and overtime, I would think would be the primary motivators of this.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I think it's a really good question. We'll come right to you, Mr. Morrissey. I think it's a really good question, too, because when people are sitting in the audience or out in TV land and they're hearing about all the changes that we need to make, this isn't just about a wish list. This is the fact that we need to have these items done. So excellent question. And if we want to take our, our plant into the future and pull it back from the 80s, and there's nothing wrong with the 80s. I had a, I had an Afro back there. But we need to pull our plant up to be able to have the capacity to do what we need to do. And then also learning, I won't say learning from lessons past. We've done some things, but you know, this is a situation that not just Waterloo is in, but we're having conversations with some of our local communities. We're having conversations statewide, and this is something that everyone is doing to bring their plants up to the future. Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this project, I mean, it's a good project and all that. And I've been a favor of it. I just wanted to have the people given the PowerPoint, explain what this would be to the person's bill who is receiving. explain what this would be to the, a person's bill who is receiving it.
So what is, how does this calculate? We, we can't pay these out of thin air, I don't think, but, um, how does this, uh, calculate?
Yeah, like I said, it'd be a five percent increase, um, is what would be this year. And then, uh, next year, we're actually, um, depending on how the progress goes, we're looking at close to a ten percent increase. So you just have to associate that with what your, what your bill would be.
So, Mr. Morrissey, did you hear that? A five percent? What did we vote on already? Didn't we vote on something as a council? We didn't yet?
Not yet.
Not, not increased yet?
I recommended an annual five percent increase for them.
Right.
Want you to adopt it because I knew things like this.
So, so. So, Mr. Morrissey, um, uh, the projection will be five this year and probably ten percent, but, uh, we need to see what happens moving, moving forward before we make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
When will we make that decision?
Uh, it, it's, it's like every year, just like Michelle just stated, you know? Um, we have, there's other projects that we have going on. So depending on how things are progressing and, um, how they're moving along is all going to dictate as far as what that percentage may be. We just wanted to be forthright now coming to let you know that, yeah, you know, let me know now that tend to believe this does look like, assuming everything stays on track, which we, uh, are hoping everything does. But there is a possibility that we'd have to do that just to make sure that we can re- repay our SRF ones like we need to.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bowden.
Just a quick question. If we implement this and, uh, how will this help us if other cities down the road decide to tie in with us? Is this going to give us that much more capacity for our neighboring cities if they decide to, uh, to utilize our wastewater treatment?
Yes.
Yeah, we just had a, um, a meeting earlier, uh, with representatives via intercoch from, um, about, uh, the potential moving forward as, uh, regional conversation. And hopefully within the next couple months, uh, we can see some type of memorandum of understanding. But not as we owe this or that, but just that joint communities are working together to see how we can work together better, uh, to meet our community's long range future needs. Any other questions? Anyone want to go out and take a tour of the bios? Please let them know.
I did, I did bring, uh, plans and specs if anybody's interested in it. Uh, this, it's, it's a, it's a technical matter. It's hard to wrap your head around in one little work session, but, uh, if anybody's got questions at any time.
How big is that book? How many pages is that book?
It's two volumes. It's this big. But I did, I do bring some copies if anybody's interested in that or, 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 or blueprints, so.
We'll give it to Dave to study tonight.
Okay, Dave's already expressed interest, so I'll be sending him home with some reading material.
All right, we want to, we want to thank you, Brian. Uh, I think you've been in this role for what, a year now at most? Uh, you've come in and I think I was telling somebody today, um, it is, it is good to see somebody with much passion and how you put your entire heart, uh, into this and no pun intended. Um, but, you know, if nobody's told you, uh, we want to thank you for all you did and how much you've done over the course of the last year and trying to pull a little bit more weight than you were supposed to. And hopefully, uh, we're going to get you some more help, uh, in there as well. So we thank you. We thank you, Randy and team, uh, for, for your work and, and being flexible when we needed to change on the fly. Uh, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, motion been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn.